Hello, everybody. Welcome, staff meeting Tuesday, November 4th, election day. So I hope everybody's getting out, making a plan to vote. Just one topic today on the agenda for staff meeting. Tom wants you to take it away.
Good morning, Chairman Commission. District Attorney Mark Bennett is here today for the last three or four budget cycles. We have a discussion every year about the amounts of discovery that is evidence rolling into Mark's office that he uses to prosecute cases. And how we're dealing with this and handling this with the advent of body cams and cell phones and now all the cameras that are up around the city and jurisdiction, there's not very many crimes that happen where there's not some type of discovery technology component into that case. So Mark is here today. He's got a, there's some new products that are online that will help him be efficient and effective. And I think he wants to walk us through that. So Mark and Aaron's here too, and another guest from the DA's office, so.
Well, this is gonna be a good discussion, Mark. Welcome. I'm glad you're here.
Appreciate it. So I've got Aaron Breitenbach with me, Deputy District Attorney, and I've got Sam Klein, who's head of our discovery unit. And so I'll give you a little bit of a background here. Discovery is, as Tom said a moment ago, it's all the police reports, all the video, basically all of the evidence that we were required to turn over. And so to give you a little bit of a sense of what it is we're required to turn over and why it is that we're required to handle all this information. I decided some of the, I might read all this to you, but we have statutes at the top that require us to turn over everything. So we have statutory responsibility to turn over all discovery to the defense. Also, though, we have a constitutional obligation, which is far broader than even the statute. And what the Constitution has said, as interpreted by our United States Supreme Court in a case called Brady. So you will hear two terms primarily in this discussion or in any discussion, really, of discovery. One is the Brady obligations, and that's a case called Brady. And what it said is that we are required to turn over everything that is relevant. And exculpatory, exculpatory, meaning the opposite of inculpatory, anything that could help the defense defend themselves either as to the merits of the case or as to sentencing. So even something that would help them in mitigation of sentencing is required to be turned over. There's another case called Giglio. And that was a case from, and so by the way, Brady, this isn't some new novel thing. This was from sixty-three. That was when that decision came down. So I think this is what you could call firmly established case law at this point. The next case is Giglio, and it was a case from the early seventies, I think seventy-two, when impeachment information that you could use to impeach a witness was not turned over in a case against a guy named Giglio. And briefly, what happened is a federal prosecutor prosecuted a case and he put a witness on the stand who said, I saw things and know things about Giglio. What that prosecutor didn't know is that another prosecutor in his office had made a deal with that witness. If you testify against Giglio and do a good job, I'll give you some rhythm on your case over here. Not sharing that, even though the prosecutor, it's important to note this, even though the prosecutor himself knew nothing of that, that was enough to get it to the Supreme Court, get it overturned, and now we have this case law. So what you see in a bunch of the rest of this favorable to the fence, the Strickler versus Green case, they just keep reinterpreting the same stuff over and over again, going, look, we mean what we say. There's been nothing but a slow, steady movement toward disclosing more and more information. They had not backed off of this at all. What's in this one, I took the time is to put this up here is it doesn't matter if the defense doesn't ask for it. I still have to give it to them. It doesn't matter if I don't know about something that's in evidence. I still have to give it to them. And the case law is just replete with all these examples of prosecutors and these cases make it to the Supreme Court now because somebody did something right. You know, they never go on, man, that's a good job. Attaboy. No one cites those cases. It's, you should have given this, you should have known about this, et cetera. And so I'm not going to beat this in the ground, but it's there. I wanted to include all this just so you can see we really have no choice about this. There's one other component to this that was in the previous one. So we have not only statute that we have to comply with and all this case laws from the Supreme Court. The bottom, we also have the ethics obligation. And so these are the three things that drive what we do every day. State statutes, case law, and then our ethics code. And our ethics code is set forth in a case since two thousand and four, tells us unequivocally our obligation to turn over discovery ethically is higher still than either statutory obligation or our constitutional obligation. We literally have to give them everything that could help them. And if not, if we don't do it, not only could the case get turned over, our licenses could be a risk. So you know, why do I come in here and complain about discovery every year, year after year? It's because I know what I'm up against. So this is just, we didn't go through all the pages and everything, but off to the side here, you can see the amount of terabytes of information, just going back, you know, till twenty sixteen, how much more information we're handling year after year after year. And if you want, we could fill in every column here, but at some point, it just gets a little, almost white noise to look at all this. But you can see, you know, seven point eight fives terabytes of information in twenty sixteen. I remember when we got our, when we hit our first terabyte of information, thinking, what the hell is a terabyte? I had to look it up. You know, and again, I'm not just saying this to make myself seem, yeah, seem old, but when I started in the office in ninety-seven, you would get a file and the file would contain paper, you know, it might be a quarter of an inch thick. And I would, our discovery unit was you, you handle your own case and you'd stand at the copy machine, you'd make copies, you'd give them to the defense attorney. He'd sign for them, she'd sign for them, and that was the discovery production. I had a big case in ninety-eight and there were eight defendants. It was a shooting case in South Wichita. And there were, we, Barry Disney and I was another prosecutor, and we stood and made copies. And there was I don't know how many pages it was, but it stood that tall. We made eight copies for each, you know, one for each defense defendant. Took us two days standing at a copy machine. That's how we used to do it. And we still didn't hit a terabyte in those days. So as you can see, the numbers just keep growing exponentially. We hit, we're at twenty, excuse me, forty-eight terabytes this year, and that's just as of yesterday. So we have two more months functionally to finish the year. And easily will be over fifty terabytes of information that we are, that comes into our office that we then process, handle and give to the defense. One other component, though, is that that's even though body cameras, because you think, well, this is just body cameras primarily. It used to be. Body cameras now actually are being trans, are being handled through Axon, through, Axon's the name of the company, and they have something called evidence.com. So that's giving them that information through, through the website. Here's another way of looking at it. I also included down here the number of FTEs that we have in the office to handle this discovery. So if I started in ninety-seven, there were zero FTEs to handle discovery, just the individual lawyers. Everybody had to handle their own. Oh, six, oh, seven, somewhere in there, we hired our first full-time FTE to be just a discovery clerk. I remember at the time thinking, wow, we finally reached the point where we need a person to do that. Sam like back here now is the head of that unit, and you can see that he's got six, seven people now full-time doing this. Just this last year, though, you can see how quickly it's, it's going up. Now, some of that is attributable to certain things. As Tom said a moment ago, we now have, I mean, again, I can go back. I remember the first time someone brought me a homicide and said, you're not going to believe this. It's on video. And I remember thinking, you gotta be kidding me. This is incredible. We actually had a video of the crime. Surveillance camera from a Best Buy or a Walmart or something. Now, when they get there, I go, went, play the video. I mean, it's just, it's assumed there will be video of some angle of every single crime that takes place between door cameras and surveillance cameras for businesses. The cameras that the city puts up around the city for to, you know, traffic monitors and flock cameras and all this information comes through and we have to process it and get it to the defense. Cell phones become one of the bigger issues for us. Every cell phone now, everyone carries a cell phone everywhere. Cell phones used to be, you know, flip phones and didn't have that much information. You know, I think we sort of get a little hyperbolic here and say there's more data and more computer power on a, on the average iPhone than there was, you know, in all of NASA when they landed a man on the moon, but there's probably some truth to that. I, whether, whether that's hyperbolic or not, I will tell you this. Every phone now has terabytes of information. And sometimes Sam was correcting me. I said, ten thousand images. He said, that's a small phone. You know, a hundred thousand images for some of these younger people who were taking pictures of everything, single thing they do. And you think, well, that's easy. Just make a copy, go to the fence. Well, one of the big issues we're dealing with is not only making copies and processing this, we have to have computers that are strong enough to download it. So I mean, when we first started getting cell phones, we would put it on the computer to download it, come back in three days. That's what it would take to download some of these. And Sam's probably going to correct me and go, it's four days. You know, I mean, whatever it was, it was longer, it was a long time. And so we had to buy better equipment. In addition, though, you know, it's not a, I don't think it comes as a surprise to anybody if I say that a lot of crime is committed by people under the age of twenty-five. Young people tend to make bad decisions and as opposed to getting older. Young people, young men especially, are going to have young girlfriends. And so the average eighteen, nineteen-year-old may have images of a girl on his or her phone, on his phone. And if she's under eighteen and if she's in a state of undress or something worse, that's child porn. I cannot have Sam simply process that and give it to the defense attorney. It's in violation of federal law. So now, not only do we have to download it and process and give it to the defense and show that we did, we have to go through and scrub it of anything that would be violative of that. And that can take weeks. In addition, we have all the body cams. And I remember when those came out and the storage costs and all the other things that were associated with that and our concerns about what's that going to take for, you know, society writ large to handle? One thing I did not consider at the time was, what do we do when somebody says, I'm tired of my attorney. I want to represent myself. You know, how often does that happen? All the time, hundreds of times a year in Cedric County. And every time one of those guys does that, we, they become their own attorney. And now we have to turn everything over to them. So when the cop shows up at the scene and says, Mr. Howlett, give me your date of birth and your social security number, so I, you know, put that in my report. We have to go in and scrub that from the video on the Axon body camera. That is a, again, a Herculean task for our folks to do. So as the, the volume goes up of discovery, so does the obligation to handle it and all the things that we have to do to attend to it to make it not only discoverable, but do it in a timely manner, and also make sure that we haven't violated some other collateral law about producing something we shouldn't have produced. In addition to all of the discovery that we process, we also then have to store things. Now, some of it is stored, we have certain contracts right now, and I'm, again, I don't put these up here so I can just stand here and read it to you, you can read it yourself, but the storage costs associated with storing all of this information go up and up. We don't just give it to the defense and then delete it. We have to hold on to it. Why? Well, in any number of things. One is there's an appellate process. Just this year, we had a two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven, eight homicide that took place just right downtown that was overturned because of a claim seventeen years later that the defense attorney did not adequately defend the defendant. So now, oh, by the way, the minute its mandate comes back from the Supreme Court, our statutory speedy trial rights kick in again. And I've got a hundred and eighty days to get this guy, a hundred and fifty days to get this guy tried. Again, from two thousand and eight with all those old reports and all that old stuff. And so doesn't happen a lot, but when it, there's no warning as to this is the one that's going to come back so you can save that and get rid of everything else. We don't have that luxury. So we have to hold on to everything. Now, we do have partners in law enforcement. We ask them to hold on to their version of things, but at some point you there's some, there is utility and redundancy. There's, there is a, there is a you know, best practices is you hold on to stuff. And even if we only hold on to what we generate and the reports that we generate and the excuse me, the exhibits and things that we admit into a trial, that begins to build up. And so you can see here one hundred and sixty, what is it, one hundred and sixty plus terabytes stored in Axon. They have allowed us to do this. We actually, our contract does not include this, but they have allowed us to do, to keep this storage with them without charging us extra. But you can tell that that's, well, first of all, they're not going to do that forever. They have another product. And that's what I'm here to talk about. But they let us do this at a cost free, but if we're, if we have to keep it ourselves and we don't do what I'm about to explain to you, then we are, there's going to be a cost associated with it. So have the storage solutions alone. Again, I think there's two components to this, I want to make it clear. One is the discovery that Sam's group is handling and the ease with which and the manner in which this new product will assist them. And, and, and I believe make it, make us able to handle our discovery obligations as they increase despite those increases without increased FTEs. If we don't have something like this, then we're going to need more folks to do this work. The second component of this, though, is, is important in this discussion because it's going to speak to the cost savings. Because if we don't buy this, then we're going to have to come up with a way to handle our own storage. So of the three options, storage wise is one is our new records management system that's going online this year. So we have our own new records management system. It would cost, you can see there about nine grand a month, roughly about a hundred thousand dollars a year, just to continue to store what we're doing right now. The second, well, I'll go to the third option in, in order here would be for Cedric County itself to just generate the servers, put them online, go live with them. And I'll, and this, these numbers come from Cedric County. But we're talking, you know, somewhere about six hundred grand in that first year, plus another three hundred thousand seventy-four-ish. And then another, what, one sixty-six every three years. But, but I was, I was corrected or clarified that that's just to have one set of servers. If we're going to have a backup, then, then I, and if I'm mistaken, someone will tell me that would double those costs. So the, probably the least feasible, most expensive opportunity for Cedric County is to do it yourself. But that is one of the three options. And then the third is the one in the middle, which is what I'm here to, to pitch, and that is Axon, which is the company that uses, that sells the body cameras and has sold the body cameras to WPD and, and now the sheriff. And I believe we're down to, someone told me, it's either one or two law enforcement agencies in Cedric County are the only ones that don't or aren't going to Axon, some of the much smaller ones. But SO, WPD, Derby, I mean, they're all eventually going to to Axon. And because they are, they have turned out to be the market leader in this product, they are kind of cornering the market. And they also recognize that they don't have a records management system for prosecutors' offices. But they need to work with prosecutors' offices around the country. So they have listened to the complaints of others like me who said, your product coming to us in this you know, delusion of information. We don't have anything that works with that for us to do, compete, you know, complete our discovery application. So they have come up with this product. Axon Justice Premier, and we showed it to Tom and Commissioner Beatty and Commissioner Meisner the other day, went through just a thirty-minute should, you know, show what it's capable of. Allows us to handle that discovery in a expedited fashion. One of, if we, if it only did one thing, it's, it's ability to cut and paste. And so for instance, Axon. A guy shows up at shoplift, probably not a big deal. Guy shows up at a homicide and we, you know, we have seventy homicides pending right now, over seven. The average guy showing up at a, or average homicide, there may be twenty, thirty, forty, a hundred cops who make the scene at one point, depending on how long they're, the scene is. There may be other scenes they go to. The suspect goes to his house. The shooting took place here. We go back to the victim's house. So two, three or four scenes, there could be cops who, you know, if it takes six, eight hours to process, there will be cops going through there. Each one of them have a body cam on. How does, you know, how do you search in real time, watching in real time to see if anybody walked up and talked to somebody and said, what's your name, what's your date of birth, and what's your address? You can't share that with just everybody. How do you do that? I mean, we're talking days and weeks. I'm going to need more FTEs. I don't, I don't want to be hyperbolic in these things, but I don't think it's being, seeing that previous slide, the number of FTEs would increase. How would it not take double the number we've got now over time? This new product allowed, first of all, transcribes all of the body cameras. So there's an automatic transcription. Then you can put in numbers and look for word search. So Sam can sit there and go, all right. I'm looking for dates of birth. I'm looking for, and things like that. Find them and then you can scrub that information in minutes rather than days or weeks. That alone would be worth the cost to, to me in terms of just our efficiencies. One thing I haven't maybe emphasized enough is it's not enough that we do it. It's the timely nature of it. Meaning I have to give this to the defense technically under state statute within ten days of the, of the preliminary hearing. So the average prelim takes place, actually supposed to take place ten days after the first appearance. Reality is most serious cases, the defense attorney needs more than ten days to apprise themselves of the case. But it is not hyperbolic to say within a month or two of any given case, this has to be done. So he can't say, I'll get to that when I get to it. It has, what's your deadline? Now. So this, the, the, not only the ease with it, with, with that it adds to our processes and the efficiencies, but the timeliness of it really will help us. This all sounds great, but what, what's the big thing? Well, the, the and this is on a, this would be a ten-year contract. And it's not cheap. It's two hundred and four thousand dollars first year costs. But I think it's, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, two fifty, two sixty long-term per year. Yeah, we'll get full firm numbers for you from Axon that they, they'll, they have provided something. I'll, I'll make sure everybody has that. There's a, they, they recognize there's going to be a prorated cost to get us off the ground and then that, but a ten-year contract. And it's not cheap, but the thing that they give us long-term is unlimited storage. And so we can store all of our stuff that would otherwise cost us you know, six hundred thousand plus to a million two, I guess, on the county side of things. Or right now, we'd already be at a hundred and eight thousand just turning on the tap today. If they go away, if Axon goes away and says, you're going to have to start paying for what you do well with, if you don't, if you don't go to this. And well, that would be the least, that would be the most cost efficient. It wouldn't help us efficiency wise, we'd, you know, none of that's gain. But just pay them for the storage and let's just do that. Fair enough. However, those numbers are not static. Number one, they're going up, but there's other things in play as well. Number one is WPD, one of our, and they're our major contributor to our criminal justice system in Cedric County. I mean, eighty-plus, eighty-five-plus percent of our cases come from WPD. Their body cameras are going to a new body camera style in the next year, I understand. With increased five G or whatever they call it, but it's higher pixels. And so the storage are going to exponentially grow. So just a hundred and eight is not going to be static long-term, just by getting better cameras with a higher pixel number of pixels is going to create higher storage. Number one. Number two, they're also adding drones and other things where, that are being implemented in, in the field that are going to cause, again, more storage costs. So two hundred and four thousand, and even if it's two fifty a year long-term for a ten-year contract. Compared to what the county bearing the burden itself is far more cost effective. But I'm telling you, I, I feel like I owe you, I mean, that's what I try to do every year is not only tell you what I need, but tell you what I think I'm going to need in the future. And I don't think it's going to take very long for us to literally be awash on what it would cost us to pay Matrix just for storage, even if we didn't go to this, or find somebody else, some other third-party vendor to pay for storage in the cloud. So my FTEs that we need to handle our discovery obligations to make sure that we handle our discovery obligations in a timely manner. For all those reasons, this is the best product on the, on the market. Why is it the best product on the market? Because Axon has cornered the market and they, they're, you know, you need to work with them and their product is made to work with them. So kudos to them for taking the initiative to put this together. Number two, the storage costs associated with continuing to do business as we are are only going to, are literally going to go from nothing to hundreds of thousands of dollars overnight. So there's, there's that as well. My final thing I would tell you is, you know, why does this matter so much to me? First of all, as I started off by saying, we have these constitutional obligations and ethics obligations and statutory obligations. How does that really manifest itself? Well, I can tell you that this is not a hypothetical fear or a hyperbolic thing on my part. We, there are two ways that lawyers, generally speaking, can get into trouble. In the civil side, basically anybody other than prosecutors, then, you know, all the rest of them, it's co-mingling funds. You get money coming in for your clients and you put it in your trust account and, you know, that's how civil lawyers lose their licenses. Now they get in trouble. On prosecutors, it's always discovered. Something didn't get turned over. Something didn't get handed over to the defense. And again, the case law says it doesn't matter if I even knew about it. Doesn't matter. And just this last summer, I sent a copy to Ryan and a few others in, in Colorado, Denver posted a big article about a judge who said, I'm done with this. And they, he threw out a, this homicide case or arson case, something very serious. And took the wood to the prosecutor's office and the prosecutor's like, I didn't know about it. And judge says, I'm sorry, objection relevance sustained. Doesn't matter. That's on you. You shouldn't have brought it until you knew for damn sure you had everything. That is not, I mean, I'm, that cannot happen here. I you know, we, we do everything in our power. And why do we keep all these statistics? So that when someone accuses us of having not done something, I can go back and throw that back. Harry Connick, the singer, Harry Connick Jr., the reason he is a junior is because there was a senior and his dad was the DA of New Orleans for thirty years. There's a, you know, and after he was long since retired, a series of cases went before the United States Supreme Court and they absolutely blistered him for not having an adequate discovery process within his office. And he was you know, well into retirement, unable to defend himself. They were stuck with the record they made back at that time. And I remember when I first read that going, that won't happen here. So that's why I'm here. And that's the pitch I want to make. And, and obviously, there's a lot more details to it, but something has to happen. We're going to need this. We cannot keep doing business as we are. The only other alternative that I really have is to say, I will make a pitch for many, many more FTEs over the next few years. Because we either get a software that'll help us or we have people who do it.
Well, Mark, we appreciate this. I, I think we talk a lot here at the bench and here at the county, we talk about the one thing that we cannot project and forecast is the growing cost of public safety. We know the sheriff, jail, EMS, nine-one-one, he's just counting. But also the growing cost of the judicial system to try all of these things and to to prosecute and to absorb all of this increase. So the, the best way to do this is we're going to be forced to start leveraging technology in better ways, become more efficient with technology. I I'm sure we have some questions here. I, one of the most appealing things in this process for me was that there actually could be some cost savings to the county. And it's in the storage piece. And Scott, if you have any feedback for us, you're welcome to share it. The storage piece of all of this discovery and the terabytes that are coming is that we, we're going to have to find a solution. And if it's an internal solution, then then there's going to be a significant cost to that.
I, I want to stay in my lane, but I don't think an internal solution handled by Cedric County is, is cost effective.
Yeah.
You're going to have to go to a third-party vendor to make it feasible. Now, the question is whether it's these guys or someone else, but
And what's unique about this solution is you can get the storage piece with the efficiency piece.
There you go.
So that we don't have to bring new FTEs into this because that's either, or we're going to absorb some costs moving forward. This is actually an opportunity to maybe have some cost savings in this. So I, I just want to make sure everybody understands that there are real opportunities here. We're going to leverage technology and some of these. So any questions? Commissioner Bubba.
Thank you, Ken. I just wanted to better understand, is this only for Axon-generated data or what about the real-time crime information, cell phones, Ring cams? We can upload all that information to this as well?
Correct. And that's part of the, the attractiveness of this. Axon knows what they've got and they know that by doing body cameras and I think they took a flyer on that to see if people would really go with body cameras. And now every major place, I mean, every police department, I shouldn't qualify it by major, every police department has some access to body cameras. And so now that they've got that going, they've got that revenue stream, how can they expand? And so they know they have to be ubiquitous. They have to be nimble enough to work with anybody. So Ring Cam, they've got something that works with that. They are working right now, one of their, you know, we can go down a rabbit hole and talk about all the things I, these guys They are working right now, one of their, you know, we can go down a rabbit hole and talk about all the things I, I, these guys need to start paying me as commission, but uh, talk about their, their services, but they are going to be able to talk to, their goal is to talk to like 200 different types of um, how do I put this? A proprietary software and, and you work with that. Cause right now when we get things, sometimes you get something from some, you know, Radio Shack variety security camera that somebody has on their house, you know, you have to download their proprietary software just so you can play the thing. They're promising us that they are in the works right now. It's part of their R and D is they're making sure that they, they've identified the top 150 or 200 proprietary types of software that interact with video, audio, whatever, so that that will be a clean uh one stop shop that when we get this, we can work with anything that gets sent our way.
In, in 2014, when I was on the Rochelle City Council, we were pushing for the implementation of body cams. This topic came up about whatever, you know, how are we going to manage all this data? So it's just amazing to me to see how much it's grown. So um it's needed and I, and I think it, um, I think it helps support law enforcement as well as make sure everybody gets a fair defense as well.
You know, I don't, I'll unsolicited, I'll offer this too. There, there have been three, three priorities for me during the course of my time as DA. One is salaries. Uh, needed to get more salaries increases for staff and attorneys. And then about three years ago, it came to a head when I was at 19% vacancy and had 11 openings in my attorney ranks and we were dying on the line. I came to this body and said, I need help. And a study was done and it showed that we did. And over the course of three years, you guys gave us raises. Today I have one opening and the only reason I have an opening and sadly is because we lost an attorney to, he passed away unexpectedly. I came to you, I gave you the pitch, we, I, you know, we built up over time, we were, you all were deliberate about it. And you provided me what we needed and you now have salaries that can compete. The second part was office space. We, you know, that was one of the first things we talked about in 2012, 2013. We were running out of space in that annex. The fact that we are standing here in the roughing building as opposed to the third floor um where the old commission room is, it's a very nice conference room now. Thank you very much. Uh, and I have decent office space, good office space, not decent, very good office space. Place that my staff is proud to come to work in today. And that's part of the retention and the recruitment that I need to, to, to have a world class prosecutor's office. And so this is the final piece to that. I needed a, our records management system that we operate on right now came in in 2002, I believe, May was 2003. Um, it's called Justware and you know, if I wanted to sell you a computer or a television in 2002 or three, you wouldn't be very interested in it. As good as it was, it is not main, it is not what we need today. So we have a new matrix as we've gone to, this is the final piece of that. Matrix needs to be able to speak with Axon, who is the elephant in the room.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks again, Mark.
Sure.
Aaron for being here, Sam. In a way, it's, it's got a, I would, I'm glad Scott joined the presentation. We had a live half hour demonstration. And they just took a typical uh DUI case and I just couldn't, I, I was overwhelmed by the amount of data and the, the transcription of, of just the officers there with the, the DUI case, it wasn't anything violent or crazy. But the volumes of transcribed information appearing and then the word search and like eliminating the PII information and, and blocking out. It, it really was eye opening and kind of overwhelming what you all have to go through to uh, but I can see what you've said. How much time it takes for, you're crunching down your time. Now, uh, Scott was nodding in approval, most of the demonstration and, and probably glad that you're not having to store this at the salt month.
That's exactly correct. And the AI efficiencies are just a bonus, frankly. Just based on the disc alone, this is a good decision. But when you throw in the AI efficiencies and the redaction and those kinds of things, it's a no brainer to me. I'm very high on this.
To uh Commissioner Bob's point, in 2014, when this started rollout, we knew there were because we didn't know what it was going to be. We didn't know the impact. We now know it and to their credit, Axon has offered this product to address the things that we all knew 10, 11 years ago will probably come. So.
Okay. Michelle?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the presentation and just trying to wrap my brain around some of the numbers you provided um on the um one of the slides, you talked about the total currently stored is, is up as just under 30 terabytes on the NAS and 160 plus terabytes in the Axon evidence.com.
Correct.
That's also a little bit less than 200 terabytes total. And you're also saying though below that, that we're going to be adding, I'm not sure I understand this one, we're going to be adding 800, 900 terabytes per year? Down the road, is that, is that?
Exceeding that, no, not, not
That's the total storage.
Total storage, yeah.
Okay.
Because you look at things like, you know, I don't know, I want to stay in my lane and not overstate this, but all the body cameras and all the cops are going to the next generation of cameras. And with the increased pixelization and, and the storage cost associated with that, it's not new information or more information. It's just higher storage costs associated with that. So one other thing that I, I think I said on, I'll say it one more time just in case. That hundred and, yeah, 60 plus that we're storing right now. Axon's allowing us to do that without a contract for that. They, technically we should be paying them for that. They, they just agree. They recognize that they're hitting us with, they aren't, but their, their client that Rochelle Police Department is hitting us with all this information. So they have not charged us for that. That can't last forever. They're not threatening, but they recognize that at some point, we're going to have to pick something. Either we go to this or we go to a standalone storage contract with them. And we could just store, I don't know what that would be. We've not explored that.
And actually, without a
The efficiencies.
Without a, without a contract that outlines, if you will, some liability details to that. I, I don't like trusting them without a contract. No, they've done a great job. Right, that's
No, no, this is just to see, I mean, well, the contract will come and I'll give it to Justin and we'll have to go through the whole process. But this was me explaining what, why it is that that, that would be the next pitch.
So we get, and I had to teach myself a new word this morning. I guess we're going to start talking about petabytes, which is the next level. Hopefully nothing higher than that will happen in my lifetime, but we'll see. Is all this, some of this, some of this storage, is it like offsite archived, you know, statically somewhere or is it like on a server somewhere? Is this like?
So the, I can say that the, the stuff with Axon is going to be more of a cloud based sort of situation. The, I will again stand my lane on the nine, 29.2 on the NAS. I'm, I'm I'll defer to Scott on that.
Yeah, the NAS is a, is a device that's basically a big hard drive, right, or collection of hard drives. Ultimately up in the cloud, it's still a collection of hard drives. There's no mystery. It's just something that we don't have to manage. And what we learned from the discussions with Axon is they have a, a scale and a purchasing power that just blows us away. Uh, and so they have economies that we can't match.
Let me just state upfront, I, I think I support where this is going, but I just have a couple of other quick questions here and that is you know, we're, I guess we're trusting AI basically to do some of the reviews, replacing human beings. If there is an error, if, if they miss something, do we have any type of liability of discovery? Because something was missed by the AI tool?
Sure, I mean, I
Tested in court, I guess I should add.
Yeah. Uh, so the answer to that is there is a, there are two remedies for mistakes. One remedy is the simple one, which is the conviction's overturned. And that happens because something didn't get turned over. Cop forgot to turn over his report, uh, forgot to turn something in. I didn't know about it, but I'm, there's no bad faith. If you go a step further and say that, and this has happened, or it has at least have been portrayed as having happened, that a prosecutor or a cop knows about the thing and intentionally withholds it. Not only is the remedy a, an overturning of the conviction, but now there's civil liability. In fact, there was a prosecutor in Texas who had to go to jail uh for having put someone in prison for, for a crime that there was at least some evidence that they knew he didn't commit. Back to, so two options, back to your question. If we do this in good faith, and I'm not, also not suggesting that we eliminate FTEs and say, Sam, just push the play button on AI and all is well. We would still go in and make sure that we have done the hard work of double checking things, but I, for me to turn things over to the defense. You know, on a situation where they have a defense attorney, there's very little, there's less risk if we have this, this sort of a system, because I'll know that I'm getting everything. It becomes difficult when there's a, was a, there's a pro se defendant. And that's its own set of things. But if, if we're doing this and we still have the FTEs and they're double checking the work, but they're doing it more efficiently and faster in a timely manner. Then I think my defense and the county's defense is good faith. So we might lose a case if something doesn't get done, if there's a mistake. But our civil liability is going to be very much limited unless you can prove that someone intentionally went in and, and put their thumb on the, on the scale. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, yes and no. I, I, uh, there's two, there's two outcomes potentially. I think that we could potentially convict somebody with a lack of data that might have helped them in their case. I mean, there's that side of equation as well. So we might lose a case because we don't have some data that we could have received, maybe could have had, if we had a human being done that. So what I'm wondering is, has this been tested in court anywhere in the country where you know, AI has been called into question on whether or not it did a sufficient job in doing this review. And I guess secondly to that, do we need to have some kind of county policy or state law gives us cover?
So as to your first question, at the end of the day, the courts aren't going to question whether AI did something right. They're going to question whether you as the prosecutor did something right. And your defense may be that AI processed this and we thought we'd given everything. They're not, I'm not aware of a case that's going to go a step deeper and say, well, you, you relied in good faith on AI, therefore you're absolved and therefore even though it didn't get turned over, it's okay. The courts don't care why. And that's the, that first couple of slides. The courts don't care why I didn't give it over. My counsel, my question is, did you give it over? Yes or no? No, stop. Now what's the remedy? So I don't know that we're ever going to get a case that says, look, I relied on AI and they did, they're going to go, did you give it or did you not? Your good faith is maybe going to keep you from getting sued personally or from your county from getting sued. But that's what the courts are concerned with. A collateral attack on a civil case where somebody wants to sue the county and say your reliance upon this half baked AI, you know, could get you. That hasn't happened yet. No one has gotten to that point where there's going to, has been a lawsuit that I'm aware of. Hang on, Aaron's giving me a house. Yeah. And so Aaron points out one thing and maybe I, again, I'm trying to do high level here, but we'll get down on the weeds for one second. For instance, child porn, okay? Um, as it stands now, and we, we had a, I wanted somebody to walk me through this, give you an example, how often. So one of my attorneys sat down with one of her cases. Uh, it was a young man who was accused of a sex crime involving a child or an underage girl. And I, I said, well, how many images did you review? And it was like, I don't know, 45,000, you remember the case I'm talking about saying that Shannon had? It's, you know, and I said, how long did it take you? She sat in this room, three days. Three days she did that and, and she looked at each image. Now some of them are a thumb drive of a 10 second video. It's not enough to look at the thumb drive because the thumb or this, give me the thumbnail still, because it could just be a weird, got an elbow, push play and then watch the whole thing. Oh, well, now I see what it was. AI, it doesn't tell us what to give and what not to give. AI will help us identify problems. So for instance, in that situation, there's a, there's a phone with, you know, 100,000 images. AI goes in and finds that there are 250 that are questionable. Then a human being does go in and look and say, okay, that is or is not child porn. Or I don't know if it is or it's not. We're going to get a judge to decide whether we can turn that over. It is not, we don't absolve our, our obligations to AI. It's simply a tool to help us be more efficient. And then if AI looks at that and in three minutes says, here's the 250, then Sam can look at 250 photos instead of 100,000 photos. That's the efficiency of AI.
Well, yeah, I, I think this is the way that we, I think this is the way, way the future is going to be. We have to go this direction. There's no question. I, I guess I would just say that knowing that uh knowing that there is an AI uh possibility that it would make a mistake, I guess I would just encourage us to think about, is there a state law needed to give us some cover? Liability for, if we lean on that tool, maybe ought to have, you know, make it, make it so it's uh high level. So we have some, some statewide help.
I, I think two, two comments on that. One is the, the rapid increase in quality of AI over the last six months, let alone last six years, has been staggering. Um, the things it's able to do in December of this year as opposed to what I was seeing in January of this year is kind of hard to believe. And I, the way I understand it, and again, I don't, 75,000 foot view. I believe that the more inputs, the more people interact with, the more AI, as that term is writ large term, is interacted with, it's going to get that much better. Number one. Number two, the way this product is being sold to us is it's to help us identify things that we might not want to give out. It does not tell us what not to. So if there's a mistake, the mistake's likely more, more likely to be that we gave something we shouldn't have as opposed to withholding something. I'm probably going to turn over some child porn to somebody because we just missed it. That's problematic. I'll have to answer that, but, but that's not a discovery violation and no one's constitutional due process rights can be violated by that. I'm not going to get sued for that. I might have to explain to a FBI agent why, you know, I should do a better job of, of making sure that stuff didn't get sent out. But I, I, I'm not aware, it's not doing anything to pull stuff out. It's to say, look at that, look at that, look at that. And then human eyes have to go in and decide yes or no.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I want to say thank you for taking a look at it, not only from just keeping up with the times, but um, using technology to do a job that otherwise we would have to add to the staffing table. And, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but I see that the initial cost for year one is listed for the, the Axon Justice Premier, the, the whole package. What is the annual cost or have they quoted that if we were to enter into a 10 year agreement?
It's the, we have gotten tentative and I think the next step is if, if I have approval to continue this discussion, what I've seen is anywhere from 240 to 260. Aaron thinks it's 250, it's in that range annually. So it's a 10 year deal uh would be that, that they want, we'd want to lock them in and they want to lock us in to that. So I would say 2.5 roughly uh for a 10 year um contract out, but I will get, will absolutely get you all the details and to Commissioner House's point. Uh, trust but verify, you know, yes, I trust and I'm, thank you. It's a good faith negotiation, but they're going to have to give us hard details and Justin's uh team will have to look through that and then it'll come back before I vote. But I just, before you get something like that and that throws a frame, what the hell are we voting on here? I, I wanted to sit down and answer these questions for you.
Good, appreciate it. Okay, two questions and then a comment. Uh, timing, um, is this something that we, you're requesting that we move on quickly? And if so, um, source of revenue, Tom, is this something that we need to wait until next budget cycle or is this something that we have some contingency or what, what's the thought process here?
You'll notice, Mark, in his description, he's talking about time in terms of weeks and months. So this is why we put contingencies into budget. We have public safety contingency. So our two issues are we have a 25, a couple of months here, we have to 25. We have a 26 budget, so it's already set. So whatever this is, is going to have to come out of contingency for a remainder of 25. If we can stand it up that quickly and all of 26, then we will, and I'll ask Mark to do a decision package for 27 so that it can be incorporated into the budget transparently and legitimately through the commission action.
I, I think I, my, I personally, I think I want to try to get you the tools that you need as quickly as possible. This is only going to continue to scale upwards. So I don't know what your thought process is or how long this takes. It sounds like you're, you're, you've already done some introductory work with Axon. So I, my question though really was, we don't have to wait till 27 budget. We can get something going quickly.
Ken, okay. Two things. One is our records management system, which is going to replace our old Justware, has been approved and that process took years and we got that through and now it's going online now. We expect it to be online 26 sometime, probably end of 26. So to have this work to be implemented at the same time, I can be building those bridges and working together. There seems to do some baked inefficiencies with, with that. Second one is just a, a hard and fast uh reality, which is contracts don't, aren't static. Uh, and I'm, I'm sure the prices they've given us are for capital or for calendar 2025. I would not be surprised at all if they go up next year. And so the sooner the better to lock us in on those prices.
Well, I would certainly be interested in trying to expedite this conversation and this discussion. So, and to be supportive of it.
I, if, if, if I get that, that sort of direction from the board today, then I will reach out to, and we will reach out to Axon and say, I want a formal contract proposal on my desk. You know, post haste.
Justin, how do we give the DA what he's looking for? Some clarity?
On this, I think there would be a question in purchasing, but I, I think in hearing what Mark's talking about, I think there might be one or more exceptions under Charter 68. The purchasing uh charter resolution is to compatibility and source, yeah. And so I think there's, I think the first step's probably just going to be running this through purchasing staff if that hasn't already happened. Uh, and then from there, it's going to be like Mark. And then from there, it's going to be like Mark talked about, getting the information from the potential contractor and going through the process. But I, I, I think this could probably move through pretty quickly, Chairman.
My approach here was to ask permission, not forgiveness. I wanted to. Let's get this done upfront.
Well, I, I think it sounds as if there's consensus to try to move the ball forward. To do that. So, well, well, those are my questions. I, my last comment really is, I mean, we hear a lot from our elected district attorney, Aaron, we hear a lot with you and work a lot with you guys, but there are people in your office that do a lot of work that no one gets to hear. And Sam is one of those individuals and I was blown away when you gave us a little joy ride on this technology. And to hear all the work that Sam and his office is doing now, all the discovery, and we're not talking about just hours and days, we're talking weeks and months sometimes. So I just want to publicly acknowledge Sam and the work that you're doing and your staff is doing. It's incredibly important to the, to justice in this community. So I just, there's a lot that goes on in that regard. And I just think people need to understand Sam's a big part of that.
Well, just final comment, then, you know, no, no one to shut up and I'll, I am a lawyer, so I'm a little slow on that, but the last thing I'll say is this, with all this information we have coming in, it's incumbent upon me to not only do all the things I need to do to comply with discovery, but also make sure that I've told you what I need to be armed with so that we can do this in such a fashion that we don't subject the county or the community to liability. And that we don't make any mistakes. Cause the last thing I want is for anybody to go to the penitentiary who, or have a conviction even who should not have been. And so not only, this is the, this is the coupling with matrix, those two things that you, you, you know, you've approved one, you're, sounds like we're on the same page to approve the second. Those two working together will help us not only be efficient and all these other things, but also help us ensure that justice is done in such a fashion that we don't make a mistake. The last time we had a discovery question, it wasn't about the case we had at hand. It was a homicide case and there was, and, and one of the witnesses said, yeah, I told the cops about this two weeks ago. We're like, what are you talking about? All of the case, the case number, the cop shirt, the house did all the stuff was in one case. Well, there was another case that a cop had responded to this person's house two weeks before. It was listed as a collateral unrelated case, had nothing to do with this. And so the detective didn't go look it up. With these software, there's a business, some of those AI and those other tools to look back and go, what was there? Because these cops in their defense, they're running from case to case. These detectives are, yeah, cases stacked up. The, 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 the risk of human error and missing something. Not looking at something and going nah, but looking at going, I never even saw that. That's what scares me. That's what I'm, that's what I'm most concerned about. And so the steps you've taken to give us matrix and the steps we are about to take, hopefully get this. This is an investment. I'm not just saying this to puff you up. This is an investment in justice that will put us in better stead, stead down the road to know that we haven't made mistakes in the future.
Great. So we're, okay. Mark, Aaron, Sam, thank you for all the work you guys do. Okay. Appreciate that presentation. Anything else? Tom, we're good. Okay. See everybody tomorrow morning, 9am.